We'll have amendments from June 20th. We have ordinances on the second reading. ODS 071203, in ordinance to amend chapter 16 dot 24, section 11, maintenance repair, revise general ordinances as the stormwater management systems. ODS 071204, ordinance to amend and supplement, revise general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick traffic and parking, delete and add handicap parking zones, leave two residential parking zones, one at Nine Laurel Place and one at 19 Bergen Court, and add one residential parking zone at Nine Laurel Place. ODS 071205, in ordinance to adopt redevelopment plan for the College Avenue redevelopment area in the city of New Brunswick. ODS 071206, approve amendment of ODS 061202, reasons to correct placard number. Ordnances on first reading. ODS 081201, in ordinance to amend and supplement, revise general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, chapter 5.100, taxi cabs that codify the fuel charge of $4.75.
I drew that with just that down in there. Be free to revise with taken with respect to the placard, the your placard down. That's essential number.
It just, so you know, we were informed that taxi cabs are driving or charging a flat $5 fee. And within that posting on the taxi cab in the front, I think it's $4, so there's a discrepancy which is causing some people to question it.
Should we try to force something by?
They should be posted properly as well. So the question for Mr. Hamilton saying is whether you keep it at $4.75 or?
You put the fuel surcharge in back of O6 and seems to be, while it's been up and down a little bit, it's not pretty bad, but should close whether it ain't, we think we should continue to bring yourself and we should be doing this.
ODS 081202, in ordinance to amend and supplement, revise general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, traffic and parking. ODS 081203, in ordinance to amend and supplement, revise general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, bulk of basic property maintenance code, exterior property areas. We have resolutions, R-081201, approve agenda amendments. 02, approve payroll for 7/7/12 through 7/20/12. 03, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. Numbers 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 are all dealing with property deeds. 4 is at 354 Samuel Street for $1,314. 5 is at 184 Baldwin Street for $806.50. 6 is at 30 James Street for $1,314. 7 is at 148 Hale Street for $859. And 8 is at 868 Remsen Avenue for $1,069. Number 9, approve amendment, resolution RDS 071224, pay additional legal fees in the amount of $610 to listener or missener for Brad Burdell from $3,720 to $4,330. Number 10, approve amendment, resolution RDS 071219, pay additional legal fees in the amount of $7,570.70 for special counsel to Hill Wallach in the matter of Vionne versus Buonanno and others, from $30,703 through $7,524.73. 11, approve request for use of city property, location of Eastern Park, requested by Rock Ed- Ed- Ed-
Education. It's a merger of education and education.
For youth festival with the charcoal grill Saturday, September 15th to the rain date of Saturday, September 22nd, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. 12, approve request for use of city property, Recreation Park, requested by Second Ward Crime Watch, Charlotte Smith National Light Act, Cook App with charcoal grill Tuesday, August 7th, 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Number 13, approve request for use of city property. Ugoa Park, the Amy Foundation, the Walk for Diana, 5K Walk to benefit the Amy Foundation, Sunday, October 21st, 2012, rain date of Sunday, October 28th, 2012, time is 6:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. 14, approve request for street closure requested by Rutgers University and Public Safety for grant opening ribbon cutting for Rutgers University Barnes and Noble bookstore, location Somerset Street to George and Wall Street, Thursday, September 6th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. 15, approve order, grant for rehabilitation home service improvements, excuse me, with James G. Morton, Jr., five where he's grown, not concede $25,795. 16, approve amendment, resolutions R-101158, additional amount of $128,000 to Track Rock Industries, this constitutes an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 17 is being pulled at the request of the city attorney.
Which is unnecessary.
Yes, unnecessary. 18, approve amendment, resolution RDS 061211, to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $748 to Stephen D. Lawland for representation of police officer James Beaster, in the matter of Michael Boswell versus the city of New Brunswick Police Department Controlman James Beaster. From $14,000, we have $92,000 to $15,640. Number 19, authorized lease performance guarantee and site inspection fees to 1130 New Brunswick Grill Team for 1130 Somerset Street, amount is $22,859.32. 20, approve change order number one, Carbrol Constructors Incorporated, adjustment in contract quantities for Remsen Avenue area storm sewer improvement. The change order reflects even additions and deductions to the contracts if there's no additional funding. 21, authorize advertising for receipt of bids requested by Department of Engineering, Somerset Street Road improvements. 22, authorize advertising for receipt of bids, Department of Engineering, George's Road pedestrian safety improvements. 23, approve amendment, resolution RDS 071253, to add language. With Puerto Rican Action Corps, Fair Housing, Counseling Services, what language are we adding? Do you recall?
Mr. Patterson? It extends, allows the city to extend the contract for a second year if we want to do that. It's allowed under the purchasing regulations, so if we want to add a second year onto it, that are option.
All right, thank you. 24, approve amendment, resolution RDS 031216, to use an additional amount of $900 for printing of logos on PlaySafe t-shirts with all colors, and the company does not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 25, approve award of contract with Logo Mania for printing and binding of various forms for municipal court, not to concede $20,578,000. 26, approve renewal of license for Jam- Jam Del, it's a pocket license. 27, approve budget insertion from chapter 159, State of New Jersey for the summer approved service program, amount is $172,560.98. 28, approve budget insertion from chapter 159, State of New Jersey, Safe and Secure Communities Program, the amount is $60,000. 29, approve request for solicitation of funds for the Rutgers University Dance Marathon for Dance Marathon 2012, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, December 2nd through 4th, and November 30th through December 2nd, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. through various street corners within the city, benefit the Embrace Kids Foundation with cancer. 30, authorize advertising for receipt of bids by the Department of Engineering, Clint Sett through the Brunswick Public Library. 31, approve amendment or resolution RDS 071248, to correct the description of the contract with Hatch, Martin, McDonald. 32, authorize payment to former firefighter Michael Davis for health insurance reimbursement, amount is $9,767.22. 33, authorize application, acceptance, and execution of grant, County of Middlesex Office on Aging, for Aging Area Plan Grant, amount to be received is $5,000. 34, approve amendment, resolution RDS 051247, additional amount of $1,055 to the 5th Elevator Service Committee for the library, the change order does constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. And that's it in the end on. Okay. We're going to go into the public course of the meeting with the court's meeting will come on order of the court please call the law.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Council Vice President Escobar, here. Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Garladi.
Here.
Council President Rusain.
Here. Please be invited to those requirements to open the public meeting act and apply with satisfying hearing notice. It's gave sufficient notice, time, place, and conduct of all public meetings in municipal council of the city of New Brunswick, the file of the city clerk, place and our appropriate bulletin board, lobby, city halls, and the transfer to the official newspaper, main hall news.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as our nation, our God, and our individual citizens.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for those who've given their lives in the Middle East and also for the victims of the tragedy that happened in Colorado. Thank you. We have amendments from June 20th, 2012. Take the motion to accept the amendments. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Rusain.
Aye. We have ordinances on the second reading, ODS 071203, in ordinance to amend chapter 16 dot 24, section 11, maintenance repair, revise general ordinances, stormwater management systems. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this ordinance? See, move the ordinance.
Second.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Rusain.
Aye. ODS 071204, ordinance to amend and supplement, revise general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, traffic and parking, delete and add handicap parking zones, leave two residential parking zones, one at Nine Laurel Place, one at 19 Bergen Court, and add one residential parking zone at Nine Laurel. Anyone wish to comment on this ordinance? See, now, move the ordinance.
Second.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Rusain.
Aye. ODS 071205, in ordinance to adopt redevelopment plan for the College Avenue redevelopment area in the city of New Brunswick. Does anyone wish to comment on this ordinance? Mr. Dawson, first, hand up one first.
I'm George Dawson, fellow owner of the New Brunswick, chairman of the New Brunswick Historical Association, which is a city advisory board, 15 members, city administrative co- part of the, part of the, I'm speaking as a chair, not as a, as members of the association since they have had, you don't meet until the end of August, so that would be a bit weird. But generally, this is, this is the College Avenue redevelopment plan we put forward by Rutgers. I've been following it over the years, over about five years since I've been discussing it. Generally, I'm pretty impressed with what they've been doing, and I guess I have a few comments I wanted to put into record today that, not as an amendment to the redevelopment plan before you, but something that will be considered by Rutgers and Devco in the development. One, the acquisition of the New Brunswick Theological Seminary territory, that, there's a, is a bicentennial placard on that site, put there in the 2030, City Bicentennial Celebration, remarking, remarking on the British East that property or their dead wire in '76, '77 when they were occupied part of the city. The, it's possible the city owns that, I don't know, the, the number plackets were up around town in 2030 and the reading, description of the celebration would seem to read that this, that were given the plackets, the people were given it to the city. Anyway, I think Rutgers and Devco should see that, maintain that, see that it's still there. It's on the top of the hill next to Garden Sage Seminary. I understand Garden Sage Seminary building would be, would be protected, other buildings would be taken over for the academic, the academic building and the honors of the, and the second point is on the Area 3 on College Avenue and Hamilton Street, known as the Grease Truck Lot. Actually, it was much more important than that in the past years since that was the location of Rocco Johnson's home, great terrace, founded Johnson &amp; Johnson, 1886 in the city. He lived there, his son, Rocco Johnson Jr., grew up there, and it was only a block away from Johnson &amp; Johnson, and he actually could walk to work if he didn't want to take the carriage to work. He probably took the horses to, to walk the block, but the walls are still there, the walls were part of the house, and I would like Rutgers and Devco to consider keeping those walls, those walls there and maybe marking the location. They have several plackets around the College Avenue, marking the previous owners where the Coomer family lived and Alexander Leber and someone, so they should protect that. Thank you.
If this is Dawson, let the, let us know exactly where that placard is, we'll definitely make sure that gets maintained as much as we can do up there. Where the Gardner Sage Library is, that's not in an area where the, that building's going to be maintained and stay the way, the way it is there, so I don't think anything will happen to that, that building. As to the wall on the Area 3, the Grease Truck Lot, Rutgers, Devco, the city were already aware of that, that wall does exist there and with the, Devco's already had some conversations with some historical consultants as to how to address that, that situation, and will have to follow whatever the, the rules and regulations are related to the SHIPA or whatever other regulations there are regarding that wall.
Yes, I, I think I was probably the only member of the public at the planning board hearing on this, and I, some things, you know, I think still need to be worked out with this plan before it's adopted. First, I want to know, what is the plan for the people who operate the grease trucks during the construction? Obviously, the lot will have to be shut down for a year or two.
Well, it's something that'll have to be, be worked out. The plan itself provides for retail to be permitted use on the Area 3, which is where the grease truck lot is, so that's something we want to have conversations with the grease truck owners about coming back in there, where they would go on a temporary basis while construction's going on, that's something we're going to have to sit and talk both the city and Rutgers, find an alternate location for them to go.
Do you have to bend any, are there any discussions with them on that?
I know Devco has had conversations with at least one of the owners of the, the grease trucks directly, and Rutgers and Devco have also had some conversations about that. As you may know, Rutgers was already looking to move the grease trucks off of that lot because they were trying to follow what the, the proper RFP and bidding procedures were, and they found that they had been missing some points on that previously, so they were going to be moved off of that lot anyway. So I don't know if Rutgers had any other specific sites that they were considering to move them to, or what they were doing with that, but we will want to find a, an alternate location for them while the project is, is under construction.
With all due respect, I disagree with the characterization that the grease trucks were going to be removed from the lot. I think the general, you know, what I, what I read in newspapers was that there was going to be a bidding process and it was going to be publicly bid who could get those parking spaces, but not that they would be moved. I think the city passed a law that prevents them from being on city streets, is that not correct?
Why would that go?
So they have nowhere to go except the Rutgers campus or otherwise private property, and I think this is something that should be resolved before the council adopts this redevelopment plan. I also have one other concern, really two, I guess, but first I'll just say this, I know that the plan is for a, a large park to go on the site of that parking lot, and I think that's a great thing, I think it's really good that we're going to have more parkland in the city, but I'm concerned about that park being owned by a private entity. I understand that many of the Rutgers buildings will also be owned by Devco, and I know that's a relationship that they've had in, for instance, Rockoff Hall, where Rutgers housing manages the building, and Devco continues to own it, and it seems to be working out to the satisfaction of both parties, but it's different when we're talking about park, and this is a park that's supposed to be accessible to every member of the public, whether they go to Rutgers or not, and I am concerned about having this park be privately owned and controlled. I know, I've asked at the planning board hearing whether or not this was going to be open 24 hours a day, and I was told that it was going to default to 24 hours a day, but if the powers that be see a reason to close it, the hours may be shortened, then it may not be open all the time, and I think it's very important who gets to make those decisions, and I think the city should insist on, if, if Devco's ready to put this park in, they should insist that be made a public park and the city control access and operating hours, et cetera. And just one other thing that I believe came up at a planning board hearing months ago, I think the attorney for that board mentioned that the Hillel House has some historic significance, and I know that that's one of the buildings that's going to be destroyed in this plan, and I just wanted to see if anybody could comment on that or, you know.
Address Mr. Cretiville's last point, I'm not aware of any historic significance of the house that Hillel's in, they're renting that house from the New Brunswick Seminary, it's in very dilapidated shape, there's a, the stairs going up, there's lots of problems with the, with the roof on that, it, it's not in good shape, and I don't believe that it is a historically significant property there. They already have plenty of wood approval to move to another location up on the corner of George and Bishop, which they may move to, this plan provides them an alternate location if they want to move to that, that it fronts on College Avenue, essentially across the street from where they are currently, but I think their preference is to move to the new location that they already have plenty of wood approval for at the corner of George and Bishop. Addressing Mr. Cretiville's other point about the plaza, privately owned public plazas are a very, very common way that public spaces provide in, in urban areas. This is a common way it is done in, in New York City, Rockefeller Plaza is, is an example of that, Metro Tech Park in, in Brooklyn, there are a number of public plazas like that in New York City, Postal Square in Boston, Piazza Schnitz in Philadelphia, it's a very common way to do it, it allows more amenities to be put in there, things you can't do in a public park, you can do in one of these types of, of spaces, you can have higher levels of amenities, do different kinds of things there that you can't do in a park. Addressing Mr. Cretiville's point about the, the hours, the plan calls for the park to be open 24, available 24 hours a day as a default position, but if there are issues that might potentially arise in the future, such as a security issue or something where you may not want it open at 3:30 in the morning, that you would be able to come and show that you need those hours shortened or, or modified. And also point out that if it was a city park, city parks close at dusk, something like that would not work in a facility like this where you have housing and other retail operations around it, the Green Acres regulations, if you use Green Acres funding for it, would severely restrict what you would be able to, to do in the park. So I think doing it this way is the, the best way to keep it open for, for everybody and have, make it a really exciting urban space.
Well, I thank Mr. Patterson for the explanation, the other, you know, successful parks and say that, nevertheless, I still think this is something that the city should have a stake in and be able to have the final say on when it opens and closes, and ultimately, you are the city council, you do have the power to, you know, set the hours of the park and certain things like that, and I think that-
Well, I see Mr. Patterson's explanation of use of the park, if the city were to have to set hour, we'd set it at dusk, and I don't think that's, that's correct for minimum rate of the city park, and I agree. I think his explanation made a lot of sense as far as the use of the park and keeping it open, so we can't set them past 24 hours a day, so.
I'm sorry, you can't?
If it's going to be open 24 hours a day, we can't do any better than that, and if there's some concern, it's a legitimate concern in the future, then that has to be looked at, you have to have the ability to shorten those hours if you need to.
Right, I think the city should be the ones in control of that decision, is what I'm saying. Certainly, there may be some things that Green Acres funding affects whether you can or can't put a movie screen on the park, but the hours are something you can set, I'm fairly certain that you are in control of that, so I think it's important that this park be a truly public place and that the city council be able to set the hours and have the final say on when it's going to be open and what's going to be done there. And also in light of the uncertainty of what's going to happen to those mobile food vendors who, you know, like them or not, they've made that place a, a popular destination, an exciting spot in New Brunswick, and I think out of respect for them, you should delay the adoption of this, this ordinance to, to figure out what's going to happen and get those answers before we move forward with this.
I saw you had any back?
Yeah, I mean, as Jonathan Jensen released an alumni from the Department of Land and City Parks, and I was concerned about what part of the budget, if any, is being dedicated to Diner Park. I know we found a project last summer for the park doing graphic representations of-
Wait, what part of what budget?
Uh, excuse me, redevelopment project for College Avenue.
And for this redevelopment, what part of this budget is for that park?
Yeah, is there any?
No.
This project is not related to, to Diner Park.
Has nothing to do with Diner Park.
If, this is for the seminary-
That entire area and then farther down, there's a couple other parts.
So, nothing, that park's not being included in this at all?
No.
Okay, is there any particular reason?
It wasn't part of this redevelopment project, they didn't include that, that park.
Okay, well, since I'm up here, I, I just want to say it's a valuable resource, it overlooks the Johnson Park and Maritza River, it's been planned to just repair, I mentioned it was part of a project that directly represented some things that could be used there, and it's a valuable space.
What you can include, council, that's why I did it.
Diner Park was once part of the city park system, but I'd say now, seems to me for the last 10 to 15 years, it's been not part of our system, it is, the structure underneath is owned by the DOT, and Rutgers has entered into a, a call it a lease agreement with the DOT, they are the party who maintains Diner Park and all the rest.
Have you addressed Rutgers on this university?
I have not.
Give that a shot because there's, they should be maintained.
Yeah, they should be maintained, yeah, okay.
Anyone else? Yes, name and address, please.
My name is Roger Dealey, and I live at 103 Barnes and Serpents, in Spence, in New Jersey, as president and members of the council. I'd like to follow up on the, the young man's preference for Diner Park. So it's clear, I, I think this project is a good idea, and I must say that with a little nostalgia, because I, as an undergraduate, I used to play, I used to play in that area which you're going to totally destroy and rebuild, so I kind of can go back and remember this, but I guess once they do this project, we'll be able to do that. Diner Park, I think, is critical, and I think the, the city council has a critical role in Diner Park, and I, and I think, and I don't think-
I really don't want to cut you off at this point, but we're not discussing Diner Park, you will wait until the public course of the meeting, we'll get to that. This is strictly on a redevelopment plan on the seminary and College Avenue?
Well, no, but I'm, I'm suggesting that you include Diner Park, and, and I'm suggesting that the state not approve the tax, the tax benefits until that's included in, that the improvements of Diner Park are included in this application, and I would like to go on, I'll wait until, until it's on, but I mean, my comments are directly related to this application.
Right.
The history of Diner Park is that the only way it was, it was, it was developed because they had to do away with the Raritan Canal, so it was, it was built, the John Lynch Bridge was built on a historical site, and Diner Park was actually a replacement, a replacement for, you know, for that historical site, and I'm reading from a memorandum of agreement, and this actually is from the postcard, and one of the, one of the parts of that was to replace an equivalent amount of parkland for public use to compensate for the Delaware and Raritan Canal and Johnson Park parklands taken during the destruction of the eighteen. and Raritan Canal and Johnson Park parklands taken during the destruction of the containment. And so, Diner Park is both, is historically important because it acted replacement for the taking of an important historical site. The bridge was built, and the bridge couldn't have been built if they didn't take 50 acres of Johnson Park, and that's, and Diner Park was part of that replacement for Johnson Park, and it, and I have watched it in disrepair for many years now. My previous employment didn't allow me to, you know, comment on its, on that, but now I can comment, and I must say that I'm upset that Diner Park was not included in this application. I think it's a good application, because if you, and I think the president's comments was that it kinda ties everything together. Ugo Park, Boyd Park. The Diner Park is right in the middle, and the bike paths and tow paths that were, that were originally contemplated and actually existed for a while, do actually tie those parks together, so it's important for, I believe, for the city council to make an attempt to include Diner Park in this application. This is the only time it's ever gonna happen. I'm not quite sure why, one, I'm not sure why it ever fell into disrepair. I know that, I know that the state origi, it belongs to the state. The state entered into an agreement with the city of New Brunswick to maintain it, and then at some point, the city entered into an agreement for Rutgers. Now, the city maintaining it was, made some sense. Probably Rutgers maintaining it made probably even more sense, because it's right behind the river dorms, and they were having more access and use to it. But it, the importance of it is that it's, it should've actually been included when they, when they did the whole Route 18 project. Now, I'm not quite sure why they neglected to do it at that particular point, and it's a wonderful development, the widening of 18, more apart, I think. That is when they should've funded and completed the project. Why they didn't do that, I really don't know. This will be the last opportunity to really address the refurb, refurbishing and the revival of a valuable, a valuable asset, not only to New Brunswick, to Rutgers, and to, and to the county. It's also, I'm surprised, I'm surprised there's nobody here from the freeloader board, because they took 50 acres of a county park, and now it's replaced, and the park is not being used. It's under, actually under lock and key. So this council can, I think, has the authority to lobby to get, not pass this, but include within, and I'm not looking to delay it. I mean, again, I knew November, trying to get a movement, and I understand the importance of jobs and all those kinds of things, too, but the important thing is to do something about a long neglected park. Diner Park originally cost $25 million, and now is in total, total disrepair. It needs to be refurbished, it needs to become part of the park system. As the president of council said, this would, this would actually complete the ties and bond these three parks together, and, I mean, that's, just using your own words, Captain.
That's what I was saying.
But I think it's critical. If the council goes forward and does not, and the state, and the state approves this, that park will lie in disarray, and it'll be a waste of millions and millions of dollars and a valuable asset, and the important thing, again, also, is that, that is actually on the banks of the old Raritan. I mean, it's a beautiful park, it oversees the Raritan River, and it's a valuable, it's a, put together right, it's a jewel of an asset, and I think the council should take that counsel. I would oppose, I would oppose the state approving the tax, the tax benefits to the council. Now, again, I don't have any power to oppose any, I'm saying individually I oppose that. I know I don't have any authority to, or influence to do that, but I do believe that as a matter of public policy, including Diner Park in this very good, hot project would make this project even better than it already is. Thank you, Mr. Cradville.
Mr. Patterson? I don't think including the park in this redevelopment plan would be appropriate. The credits that Judge Dealey is referring to, they are development credits, they're not for the development of public parks. Also, I don't think this is the last chance for Rutgers to do something with that park. I totally agree that that park is sorely underutilized and in not good condition, is the diplomatic way that I will try to say that. I think there is an opportunity for Rutgers, if they do something with the river dorms, to redo the park and the river dorms together. Those are old dormitories. When they had the College Avenue greening plan, that was a major part of that, was to try to redo those dormitories along the river. The way the dorms are now and the park are constructed there, there is very little public access to that. You can only come in from the ends, you can't really get in there through the middle. I think the area deserves a complete redesign, and would be appropriate to do that with a redesign of the river dorm areas and not part of this, as just sort of a, an appendage stuck on, and when the funding for this project would not be able to really provide any funding for this area to be added to. So I don't think this is the appropriate time to do it. I think there are other appropriate times, because I agree with the gentleman back here and Judge Dealey, that it would be a much better resource for the city to have more access to that park, because if you're not living in the river dorms or the dorms across the street, there's really not any access to that area, and it really should be improved. It could be a great asset to the city.
You wanna ask more on this ordinance?
I just, I just have a comment, real quick. I, Mr. Patterson, I encourage you as a city, if you're working here with Devco and Rutgers, to encourage them to find, you know, a place, suitable place for the green projects. I think that that is something that, while construction is going, I think that's, to me, is very important. And also, I think it's great that there's an opportunity that you could tell Rutgers to take it, you know, in terms of the park, that, you know, make them aware that they should take advantage of looking for ways to, if it's not on this one, the next one to, for that area to be redeveloped and used that part, because it is a nice park. So I just wanted to say that.
Move the ordinance?
Skyler.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Barabie.
Aye.
Council President Reesing.
Aye. O-Dash-07-1206, approved amendment of O-Dash-061202. The reason is to correct a placard number. Anyone wish to comment on this ordinance? Say none, move the ordinance.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Barabie.
Aye.
Council President Reesing.
Aye. O-Dash-081201, in order to amend and supplement, provides general orders to the city of Brunswick, taxi cab to qualify the fuel charge for $1.75.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, August 15th, for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Second, roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Barabie.
Aye.
Council President Reesing.
Aye. O-Dash-081202, in order to amend and supplement, provides general orders to the city of Brunswick, traffic and parking.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, August 15th, for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Second, roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Barabie.
Aye.
Council President Reesing.
Aye. O-Dash-081203, in order to amend and supplement, provides general orders to the city of Brunswick, Boca Basic Property Maintenance Code, exterior property areas.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, August 15th, for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Second, roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Barabie.
Aye.
Council President Reesing.
Aye. We want to resolutions, O-Dash-081201, through O-Dash-081234. Number 17 has been pulled as unnecessary. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on any of these resolutions? Mr. Cradville?
Yes, Charles Cradville, Councilperson, Street of Brunswick. I have a question about two of these resolutions. The one that ends in 19, the 1130 Avenue Realty Co. LLC. I think I found an error in that. One of the instances mentioned a different property, 130 Eastern Avenue LLC, or is that supposed to be that way, or is that a type of...
I'll check that. Is this the second?
The second, yeah, sure. The second one is the liquor license, the pocket liquor license. What does that mean?
That means that the liquor license is not currently cited. It's in the pocket. It's aside from location.
Okay.
And it's inactive.
It's inactive, but it's been renewed, and who, who is Jamdale LLC, who's the principal?
I don't recall who the principals are, but they own a restaurant called Caribbean Cafe.
Oh.
And it was redeveloped, and they pocketed their license.
Okay, so they have it and can use it when, when they're ready?
Yes.
Cool, thank you, and so, yeah.
The other question, the name is property, Eastern Avenue LLC, is the owner of the property, December 1130 Avenue Real. Not one of the guys to pass the shape, is that...
I don't, I don't believe so. I think that might be, 130 Eastern, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
No, that's, that's the apartment going across from Shell Station. That's not...
1130 is the...
Yeah, 1130 Summer Center, different.
Can we just pull this in?
Oh, exactly. Okay, and, yeah, just what was it for? What was the purpose of it?
We'll pull that real straight down.
Yes.
The reason, the reason why I think we developed the project that we're gonna do, they didn't have the funding, and we can't, so they're not gonna do it.
Oh, so they've been approved or something, or...
Yes.
Cool, done, thank you very much.
Move the ordinance. Anyone else on any of the resolutions? Miss Mann.
Yes.
Name and address, please.
My name is Hazel Davis. I'm here with my son, Michael Davis, and I would like to respond or address the council with the resolution. Number, well, one...
32, we're done.
Yeah. Michael, my son Michael is a disabled firefighter. He was injured in the line of duty September 2006. He was found to be disabled by the New Jersey Police and Firefighters Pension Fund, and was awarded accidental disability benefits in December 2010. During his time, during the time that he was, his application, his disability application was pending, Michael paid for continuation of his Cobra benefits, his medical benefits under Cobra, as advised by the Personnel Department in the city of New Brunswick. The Police and Firefighters Pension Board qualified Michael for disability. Retirement Retro Act hit to November 20, 2008, which was the day he filed the disability. Michael is seeking reimbursement under the New Jersey State law for Cobra payments made while his disability application was pending with the state. Under that law, he has requested to be reimbursed for the Cobra benefits that he paid in good faith to the city of New Brunswick for the period for which he was found to be disabled, and that amount totaled This requested reimbursement from the city has been delayed since Michael's award date, and he is again simply requesting what is due him. That's all. Michael has been given a release to sign that is excessive and covers matters totally unrelated to the Cobra payments, such items as title seven of the Civil Rights Act, immigration reform and control, family and medical leave, and about 16 other items that have been identified under the release. The reason that Michael has difficulty or is reluctant to sign such a document when he is only requesting reimbursement for the payments he made is that there have been... Michael has called, he's written letters, he's personally visited the city of New Brunswick trying to resolve this matter. There was a lot of confusion, I guess. His calls were not returned. We went to the office, and now we think that the matter is close to resolution. However, things are still not complete, because he has been asked to sign a release that is much more excessive, much more excessive than simply dealing with what he's asking. It's been made abundantly clear to us that Michael is a lone person requesting this payment. He's not like the city of New Brunswick, and out of deference to the attorney, he does not have an attorney that's our maintainer that can go through court and spend time doing this, and when we've talked about this, we've been advised to get an attorney. Michael's sole income is his pension disability. When the city acknowledges that he made the payments in good faith, when the pension department says he's entitled to the reimbursement, it's difficult for us to understand why he is being required to sign a release that covers everything from soup to nuts. It feels very much like he's paying, that the money's being held hostage to coerce, to encourage him or force him to sign some kind of release for anything that happens in the future. Michael is willing to sign a release as long as it addresses the issue at hand, and the issue at hand is that he is requesting reimbursement for the Cobra payments that he made. That's all he's asking for. He's not, that's all he's asking for, and that's what we would like to have happen as a result of this council meeting.
After this resolution, this report council will do, will pay him, as I said, his full amount of footsoy. The release that's been prepared by Mr. Sherry and reviewed by me probably is a little daunting, as matters of this can be. I'm satisfied that it's fair, and I'm satisfied that it's in the best interest of the city to close all doors to later claims, and that's all that it seems to do. It'll be paid the full amount. There's, there is a litany list of statutes under which various claims could be made, and what Mr. Sherry was seeking to do, and I fully endorse, is after the connection, is to protect the city's interest that no, no further claim could be made when Mr. Davis gets this money that he's properly entitled to.
And we believe that that's two separate issues. He's not claiming anything else. All he's asking for is reimbursement for the money that he paid out, and he's asking, he will sign a release. If you're concerned that he's going to file some kind of suit about the reimbursement, I can understand your need to keep the city safe. That's not what he's saying. All he wants, and since you have agreed that he's entitled to the money, that it's money that he put out, I don't understand why he has to sign a document that covers everything from soup to nuts that's not related to the Cobra payments. He's legally entitled to it, and if you want to do a release that says that, he would be happy to sign.
I have a question, but I won't, Ed, your concerns, has this been going back and forth, or, I don't wanna do this now, as being...
But never Mr. Sherry answered that. I was even involved in some discussions with the Davis family about...
Actually, I have.
I've provided the, Mrs. Davis, a copy of the release and stipulation agreement that was prepared by our law department. I calculated the reimbursement. I agree that the reimbursement is appropriate. I put it on the agenda. The law department has told me that the release is a standard form of release. I accept that. I did try to explain that to Mrs. Davis a couple times during the week. She has expressed a major dissatisfaction with that. She thinks that it's excessive. We've heard that tonight. The resolution, if I'm reading it correctly, says that the reimbursement is authorized, subject to a release being executed in a form that is acceptable to the law department. If you want to, I did recommend to Ms. Davis that an attorney look at the release on, you know, in their best interest, and I guess they are not going to do that, but...
I didn't say you weren't willing, I just said...
The resolution does authorize the reimbursement. I think it is appropriate. Again, it's subject to a release being in a form acceptable to the law department.
What I would suggest, instead of trying to hash this out in a public meeting over this, is to hold this until the next meeting, and hopefully, if both parts can get together before then, if you can get it...
if you can get an attorney to review it, would be helpful before we go any further. I don't want to delay his payment any longer either. I don't want that coming to council, but I'm willing to, I'm willing to hold it for two weeks if that's acceptable to you, and then maybe we can both get together and get this resolved instead of doing, airing it out in a public meeting like this. Is that acceptable?
It's acceptable as long as we do follow through, and at the next council meeting, we should come here and...
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Loughlin, I would ask that we pursue that and follow through with Ms. Davis and Ms. Davis, if you can get an attorney. Um, it sounded like you were willing, willing to do that, to review this, and, uh, again, you would, you would decide and get this resolved before we come back to the council on, once we get a council meeting.
I just have a question. I just have a question. Have we had any situations similar to Mr. Davis before? Have we required a, a release in a situation similar to this?
Not, not for Cobra benefits, but claims that have to be released.
For no Cobra, no reimbursement for Cobra?
No, not, not, this isn't a unique situation. Um, Mr. Davis's application for disability retirement was rejected on two previous occasions before it was approved, and that, that, that spanned a year and a half. Um, and, and so during that period of time, Michael was neither actively employed or retired, and that's why the Cobra Bennett, or, you know, contribution was required. Um, on appeal, when PFRS the third time approved the retirement, they went back retroactively and, and, you know, in that regard, um, upon disability retirement, the, the employer is, um, um, on the hook for 100% of the premium. So in, in that regard, he is entitled to a, to a refund. I fully acknowledge that, but it was a very unique situation.
I just wanted to know if he has been done. I know the Cobra reimbursement is inside, I just wanted to know if we have done a condition before on a situation like that. Thank you.
Uh, excuse me. It was not rejected, possibly this...
We're gonna hold this. So we...
Yeah, just want to make sure that the facts are clear here for everyone, that's all.
Yeah. And that's why I would like to...
Stand by, Mr. Davis.
I understand.
We shouldn't do...
I just like to, hopefully having that hit, our employers can review it. Um, you said you sounded like you were willing to do that, and soon we can get this resolved for both sides. Mr. Remsen?
Charles, into Harvey Street. I'd like to hear Mrs. Davis's response to Mr. Loughlin's statement on rejection.
I'm not gonna go through that.
It's a public hearing, you know? He made a statement, I think she's entitled to...
I'm not going through that.
I think she's entitled to give a statement, a response to his statement.
Did he say in fact?
But she doesn't, she disagrees. Well, can't we hear her version of the facts?
That's, anybody else on any of the...
Whoa! I wonder on that resolution. I think it's an embarrassment that you guys are actually gonna force this man to sign a release, when she's stating that this is money that he gave the city, that he personally gave out, and you're gonna force him?
Can I just, can I just hold it for two weeks?
I don't care how long you hold it for. It's she's here now. You're here now.
I don't understand that.
Why would you inconvenience them another, another person?
Put it up for a vote, pass it, and she'll have to sign a release. Is that what's on?
I don't, I don't care what's on, I'm just sitting here listening to you guys, and it's disgusting that you would go to that venture of forcing this man to sign a release to get money that's his? To get money that's his? That's an embarrassment to the entire city.
It's not.
And I want to know if each and every one of you sitting in that chair agrees with this type of action? I know Mr. Shammy does, Mr. Loughlin does, but do each, one of you individuals do? That you're gonna convince them to come back? Another council meeting? He's disabled. He's a firefighter.
He does have to come back if they agree in a meantime on the language...
We can agree right now. We can agree right now.
Enough.
You just don't want to air that.
I'm trying to resolve this.
Resolve it now.
I'm not gonna resolve it in a public meeting. Why don't you get across for a public meeting and resolve it? It should be resolved between the parties.
So on the resolution, anybody else on any of the resolutions? Seen none of the resolutions?
I just wanted to confuse myself with one to figure out. 23, again.
Okay. We're gonna... So, Eddie.
Second.
Your call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reese Dean.
Aye. Anyone from the councils to address the public? Anyone from the publicists to address the council? Scrabble?
Yes, sir. Mr. Council President, I'm Mr. Council. It's my pleasure to have the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I just wanted to ask about a few things. So, um, as it turns out, the Associated Press did file a lawsuit against the city. That lawsuit's been resolved. I wanted to get your comments on it. Basically, the documents they'd asked for and the video, or the audio they asked for was given.
Yeah, what I understand is that there was a, there was a question of releasing it without it, with a name being redacted. As soon as that name is redacted, the Associated Press approved that, then it was released to them.
Okay, well, I guess my follow-up question then is why did the police director initially completely deny the request to not turn over any of the information?
I don't know.
Sure would be nice if you would show up at the meeting so we could ask you. Okay, is, is representative able to speak to that?
As the council president said, the, um, the tape that they requested and the name of an undercover operative that is still involved in ongoing investigations and releasing, we felt that releasing that information should compromise who the New Jersey is at this time, and so, uh, we made it through with the AP to redact it, that's why I was helping.
Still not sure why it was rejected. In the first place, my question then would be, how much money did, how much of our taxpayer money did we spend, um, you know, negotiating that settlement?
Mr. Tax, Mr. Security works for a cell. He may have had a mild answer on behalf of the city, but he works for the city, he was a great partner with the city.
So there's no additional tax money to spend? Okay, thank you. Um, wanted to ask for an update on the, um, fire department implementing range drug testing policy?
Uh, Mr. Rawls and I completed a, um, drug testing policy that we think is in good shape. We've sent them off to our labor council for final review, um, and pending a good sign-off by Ms. Happy, we expect will executed sometime next week with the, uh, the two fire unions and put the plan in motion. I think one thing that wasn't said at the last meeting is that the director has always responded to situations where he thought there was a reasonable suspicion involved. I don't think we were really clear about saying that at the last meeting.
Thank you. Um, wanted to get an update on how the Remson Storm Sewer Project is going. I noticed that all of that dirt is being taken to the Department of Public Works, and it's just gonna be temporarily there, is my understanding. I'd like to get an update on, you know, how far along we are and what's gonna happen to that dirt in the long run.
Mr. Logan?
I'm standing.
Material that's been taken up to the, um, the yard next to Public Works is not suitable for backfill, so it's just temporarily being stockpiled there. The contractor will be moving that probably within the next week, it's up to me. But as we excavate up Remson Avenue and, and the side streets, the, uh, the deeper you go in the ground, the shale gets harder and harder, and it comes out in larger pieces, which cannot be used for the backfill material, so it has to be taken off the site and other backfill material brought to the site for the trench, and that's all been included in the contract documents.
And do, do we know where the ultimate destination of the, the dirt is? Is it...
Where it's going?
Yeah, where his car broke, and the constructors are in charge of it?
Uh, they have a, they're doing a project for the, the New Jersey Department of Transportation. I'm not sure where it is yet. I will be finding that out, but before the DOT will take it on the project, it had to be tested for contamination, even though, you know, we sort of know it's, it's clean, but the DOT would not accept it until it was tested by a lab. So I, I understand the testing's been concluded and test data's been sent to the DOT, and they are expecting an answer within a week or two as to its acceptability for the other project.
Thank you very much. Uh, two more. I wanted to ask about the condominium complex. I never knew the name of it until it was, uh, all over the views twelve. But Casa de Luso Condos, about like ten or twelve buildings in, just off of Remson Avenue. Um, I know that the city showed up last week and gave something like 430 housing violations to, to the owners of the properties there. Wanted to ask, how does that work? Is that the responsibility of the condo association to pay the fines if, if there are fines levying, or is it gonna fall on the actual condo owners themselves?
Mr. Allen, he's shaking his head, yes.
Uh, responsibility for maintenance, as the city understood, was, was, uh, that of the, of the association. I can't, not having seen those violations, I can't pay it to someone before on the order. But the, the basic thing is for the association, as an association, the only reason the city got involved is because the residents there were not satisfied with what the association was doing.
I understand. I think that's all too common of a problem, is the associations don't do what they're supposed to. Uh, but having seen those violations, most of them have the, the names of the individual, uh, you know, condominium owners on them, so I'm just concerned that maybe now they've gotten the hammer dropped down on them. Um, if, if their names are on those violations, does that mean that falls on them to, to pay the fines?
I haven't seen them. I suspect the names are on there to identify the units.
Mr. Marquette?
Uh, what, Mr. Hamilton just said is correct. The name don't want to identify the unit. The condo association's responsible for any of our fines.
Correct. And I understand they're only working to rectify the problems, and that's terrific. Um, I just want to ask, how did it get so bad that over, I mean, some of these places are obviously really in disrepair? How can that be allowed to happen?
The state is responsible for that type of dwelling, not the city. We went in there because our residents needed help like this, so we went in, did the inspections, so that the condo association now has to make those repairs. We went in because our residents needed us, but it was a state jurisdiction. We told the state we're going in.
Great. Well, thanks, thanks for stepping up. The, uh, only other thing I want to ask about is the, the bicycle lanes here in New Brunswick. I think it's a great thing that, that you adopted an ordinance to, to, I guess, send out good specifications, and my understanding is that if all goes according to plan, it could be done by October. Um, I just wanted to ask specifically for, for the streets. Um, I'll just tell you the ones I know, and, and I guess if, uh, the city engineer knows others, could, could add them to the list, but I know that Harvey Street, um, Central Avenue, Bartlett Street, Wykoff, and I understand a dedicated lane on Remson. Are there, are there any that I'm missing?
Mr. Logan, was there anything you missed on that, or did you know?
Yeah, we're doing Remson Avenue. We're doing, um, that's a dedicated bike lane from the municipal boundary up to Sanford. Uh, we'll continue that down on Remson when the Storm Sewer Project is complete, so in the interim, we're gonna divert it across Sanford and down Commercial, so we can tie it into the bike way, uh, down by Nielsen Street. There are a few others which unfortunately I do not have the list with me over in the support, but, uh, I believe, you know, I wouldn't even venture a guess at this point.
I'll give you a call.
And, uh, so, yeah, I just wanted to say, I think that's really, really phenomenal that that's moving forward. It's long overdue. Uh, you know, it's, it's, there's no safe place to, to cycle right now, and we need to change that. I know cyclists just injured seriously, I think just yesterday, um, at, I believe, Morris Street and George Street. I mentioned this to the Traffic Commission today. I know that they're considering making some changes to Morris Street, like we discussed before, making it a one-way, the other-way. Um, and if that's gonna be happening, and we're reaching out to the county to help with that, I think we should consider, uh, making that a street that could get some shared bike lanes on. Thank you.
Anyone else? My name's Ben Pearson, 47th Dr. Talking about Denier Park. Who owns that? Rutgers owns that? Is that what's decided?
Diner Park is what I'm...
Yeah.
Rutgers is responsible for it.
So the access there is blocked by that gate. My concern is the section behind it that runs along the river, is that still considered Diner Park? The entire section that runs from Route 18 to Dechambridge to Route 27? Who is in control of that?
I'll read that. It's the third one, it's more, I'm pretty anxious to...
Mr. Jackson?
I don't know definitively, but we've got DOT property. I know it's not the, uh, city's. I believe that's, that's DOT, that's their land, part of their...
And then has the city ever considered maybe getting that back from the DOT to convert that into a more secure park space along the river? You go to any nice city in the East Coast, you'll find out they have great recreational areas near the river. I think Brunswick has it right in front of them as a gem. And there is access, um, there's no fence through Denier Park, but you can get there from the Route 18 underpass, you know, you cross right over Route 18, right by Route 27. Um, I ran my bike back there. It's a very dangerous place. Um, I understand there's no bikes there, there's no maintenance, um, lots of unsightly people there doing unsightly things. I just think maybe if the city or Rutgers could work together, get it from the DOT and actually maintain it and create open space that could connect these parks together, both, you know, Buick to Boyd, just built that beautiful park with a great path. You know, I really think the city should consider maybe converting that space into usable, you know, bikeable space that would connect into your bike way that's going in. You know, I ride my bike every day, and I think when I have to bike from, say, Cook Campus to Bush Campus, I could ride on a bike path through Boyd Park, right along the river, right up to that pedestrian byway, you know? What would make it any more safer for people in the city to ride bikes?
Um, just to address one of the gentleman's, uh, points there. About five, six years ago, uh, the state was looking at making improvements to that, uh, area, which, uh, is all affectionately called the trench. I think, uh, George Riveri's the county planning board director named it that. Uh, unfortunately, DOT, it's, uh, believes their property, they ran out of funding for it. It was going to cost several million dollars to be able to expand it. It, as you know, if you've ridden it, I've ridden it a number of times, it's very narrow, and you'd have to cantilever it out, so it would be many millions of dollars, and it just didn't have any, uh, funds to, uh, to do that. Uh, one of the bike lanes that Mr. Crowe has talked about, we've talked about for doing the, um, uh, that the county is doing along George Street and so forth, will provide some other, uh, access for bikes to go, coming from Cook Douglas going over to the, uh, the other campuses, uh, on the other side of the river, or the College Avenue campus. We're also looking at trying to do a connection, uh, at the Lynch Bridge up on, uh, George Street, so that that's a better bicycle connection to connect to those bike paths that are on the other side of the river there.
Do you want to ask one of the council...
I think Mr. Crowe, you brought up the situation as far as the reform with the firefighters, but what is in place as far as drug testing? What is in place as far as the police department? Like, are they, is, is it gonna be in reform as far as the police department goes?
The PG is required to be tested by Attorney General guidelines, and I would look to JT to speak to that, but I think they are maybe tested twice a year.
The police department is tested 20% of the police department twice a year, so potentially 40% of the police department is tested at...
At random?
At random.
20%? 20%? And that's Attorney General's guidelines? There's nothing the city can implement?
With the union?
With the city and union?
Yes.
They possibly could put some plans together to negotiate, because, you know, we had four shootings, three murders, six police officers involved, and not been tested. Not been tested? Let me repeat that. We had four shootings, three murders, six police involved, and not been tested. So what would constitute some reform as far as the police department goes? Instead of relying on the, the, uh, two times a year, 20% of the department?
Yeah, it's something that has to be negotiated between the city and the unions.
You get what I'm saying? That's possible to get negotiated.
And, like, people that are doing the negotiating, I don't know when the contract's up or the next time it's up, is it on, working under...
I mean, 'cause this is a major concern.
Sorry?
This is a major concern. You know, officers that are not getting tested, and, I mean, Derek, the Derek Middleton situation should have triggered off something within the department to start testing people, I mean, testing officers, whether... Derek Middleton. The New Brunswick, I mean, no, not Steve, Steve's his brother. No more than you do. Derek Middleton, officer that was caught in a crack house in another city, but was still operating as a New Brunswick police officer. And he would have never been, he would have never got caught if he wasn't in another city, he wasn't in another city's stand. So you may have several officers that are doing the same thing, and not, not just illegal, maybe steroids, maybe cocaine. I just don't want these people under the influence carrying guns.
And I understand, and as I said to you last time, I don't think you should be like in the whole department. There are, is...
Well, I mean, we test the whole department, and whoever's clean is clean.
I understand, and again, I see you negotiating with the unions. There's nothing we can do at this point to do that.
I mean, you're gonna do some...
Negotiation.
I mean, you're going to do some... there's nothing you can do at this point.
Correct.
So let me tell you, if an officer can get high as a kite and put his gun, grab his gun around his waist, and come through New Brunswick tomorrow, that's what you're saying.
He's got supervision. He's not a ranking officer before he goes on duty, and he's inspecting when he goes off.
But he's not drug tested. No, he's not.
Mr. Loughlin, what's our contract of?
I believe the end of 2013. And there have been a number of officers who have lost their jobs because of the testing process. The random testing process did, over the years, come up with some positive findings which caused people to lose their job. I don't know what the right number is per year, whether it should be two, whether it should be 12. But I, you know, we're simply following, I believe, the Attorney General guidelines as they are prescribed through every police department in the state.
Mr. Clinton, I understand what you're saying, and I know what you're asking for, but unless it's negotiated in contract beyond the two, what would the president do? There's nothing that we're going to do right now.
So I have to wait till 2013 is the best? I'm not. Let me hit the next meeting to where it's in the same...
Okay, that's fine.
And also, on Saturday, there was a situation that happened on Seaman Street in New Brunswick. I know the officers are aware, there were 20 gunshots went off about 3:00 AM in the morning, and a car got shot up. Happens to be a family member's car got raided with bullets. It took the police about 45 minutes to get to the scene, and I'm familiar with that area. I'm always in that area. You know, that's insane for a community to have to sit there and wait after, you know, after my grandmother hears 20 gunshots, she don't see the police until 45 minutes later? I'm quite sure if that was Rutgers Village, the police would be there in seconds. Why does Seaman Street have to put up with that type of neglect?
First of all, personally, Lieutenant, do you have any knowledge of this incident?
I don't know what the time was for police response, but I'll get to it and I'll report back at the training regarding that.
To find out what the response time was, what they made, what followed from that?
Okay, and if the response time is 45 minutes, what measures would you take?
I'm not going to make any suppositions on to find out what happened.
Why not? See, these things are serious, because even... Wait, wait, wait. Let me explain something to you. Let me explain something to you. It took them 45 minutes to get there, okay? There was no police presence the following day. There was no police... there was no police presence the entire Saturday, no police presence the entire Sunday, no police presence the entire Monday. So that means that the people that had the shooting could have actually came back, they had three days to play. That's when the murders happened.
Which is why I'm having to check on it and find out what happened.
No, all right, why wasn't there a police presence? Also, check on why there wasn't a police presence also.
He's been a father, he's hurt, yes.
Were there... were there police presence also?
I'll have to check on JT. Sorry, you got it?
Okay.
You got it?
I got it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Sign up, we'll do this. Your call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Reesean.
Aye. Sir?